I'd like to call this meeting of the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission to order. This is Monday, April fifteenth at seven o'clock. All of our planning commission members are present. Good to see. Thank you all.
Welcome back, Ryan.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Welcome back.
It's sabbatical.
I'm going to ask that everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recording for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the current agenda.
Second.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed. Case is six zero. Please disclose any conflict of interest with the items that are on the agenda tonight. Seeing if anybody have any items.
They could pass seven zero, not six zero, right?
Excuse me, seven zero.
Thank you.
You're right, seven zero. I guess I wasn't coming myself there.
Right.
Okay, any conflicts of interest? Nope, none noted. Can we have approval for the minutes of the March fourth, twenty twenty four meeting?
So moved.
Have one edit.
Yes. Article six, my name is spelled wrong, number one.
The darn French spelling, EAU, the U is missing. And then the third sentence. Guess it's the second sentence in the parenthetical, even if he doesn't agree with him, I would say even if one doesn't agree with him. It makes it sound like I don't agree with him, so. So change he to one.
That's all right, that's number seven, Article seven.
Article six.
Article six.
Be noted as there's a wishing to speak, Bruno, and then. Even if he doesn't agree with him, even if one doesn't agree with him, one.
Okay.
That was it.
I did pick up the U on Bruno, by the way. Looked at that earlier. One thing I had mentioned is that Planning Director Hendrick, is that correct, without an S?
Correct.
Okay, because it has an S in here. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other changes or corrections?
I'll still your S and change it to U, how's that? We'll keep it, we'll keep the count the same.
Yes.
Single one.
You all need water, trust me.
Okay, you know, I have a vote in favor of approving the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six, seven zero, seven zero. Sure get that right. I'd like to now acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak, and we ask that you limit your comments to items that are not on the agenda for tonight, that they be comments on previous issues.
I think what you meant to say is not items slated for a public hearing, right?
Yes.
They can make a comment on any, which I don't think we have a public hearing schedule, so they can make comment.
All items are public hearings.
Well, they are. For, who's that change? I'll find that out.
Clarified.
Sorry, the copy I have doesn't show that. Okay, any, anybody like to come forward and make comments? If you do, please identify yourself and your address.
We have a county commissioner in our midst, maybe he can identify himself, so people know that he's here. Welcome, all.
Thank you, just here taking interest in your proceedings.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, no other comments? Anybody online? Nobody. Okay, well then let's move to case number twenty-four thirty-eight nineteen, which is a public hearing. Applicant is Doug Butterworth on behalf of John Holmes. Andrea?
Thank you. The first item on our agenda today is five eight eight two Cascade Road Southeast. This is a request for a type-two special use permit to build an accessory building exceeding eight hundred and thirty-two feet. The property is zoned R one, it is surrounded by R one on all sides, it is near the watermark PUD on the south side of Cascade Road. This is a property that's also waterfront on Walden Lake. The applicant is proposing a nineteen hundred fifty-eight square foot accessory building, which requires the type-two special use permit. The, the existing property also has a two hundred square foot poolhouse. In review, this was the largest accessory unit in this area, there was nothing that was consistent in size. Some other. Our, our main concern with this item, if you look at the site plan, is that the accessory use is proposing a garage on the bottom floor and then a it's not called a dwelling room, dwelling unit, but in staff review, the proposed use has a bathroom, a kitchenette, and areas for dwelling. So after looking at this and reviewing the special use or the, the requirements, the township does not allow for accessory dwelling units and the elements of this site, you know, define it as an accessory dwelling unit. We've had cases in the, in the past where there's maybe been a bathroom that's been allowed with an accessory dwelling unit, but the addition of a kitchen in this this space that's designed as a house pushes this into the dwelling unit category. You have a question, Scott?
I, I. I'll let you continue.
As you can see from the, the site plan, there's a two-story accessory unit, the materials on the exterior are aesthetically pleasing and designed well, however, as, as mentioned, accessory dwelling units are not allowed. So for the standards of, for the criteria of, for approval, you find these in section thirteen seventeen oh three of the zoning ordinance. The intended use of the building is a factor. One thousand ninety-eight square feet are garage space, a hundred and eighty-four square feet is a wood shop, two hundred and nineteen square feet is a tool room, and a three-quarter bathroom on the main floor. The upper level is proposed to be six hundred and seventy-two square feet with a kitchen, joined by finished, finished living, living spaces, the way that it's defined. Proposed location type and kind of construction and general architecture character of the building is another factor that we have to consider. The accessory building is proposed to be in the northwest corner of the subject property, construction will be a full foundation with entry below grade and a game loft with living space on the second floor. The general architectural character will, will be with composite wood siding, stone veneer, and shingled roof. Size of the building and relative, in relation to the house and lot, the home is thirty-three hundred square feet with an eight hundred and sixty-eight square foot attached garage, and the basement has an addition, the basement has three thousand square feet of finished space. The lot is four point four acres. The parcel is, it is not uncommon in the R one district, but there are surrounding PUDs with small lot size compared to this. The parcel surrounded by Walden Lake range in size from one acre up to forty-two acres. See the surroundings. Lakefront property with the surrounding vegetation is lakefront with wooded yard, the topography has low points with some wetlands. You know, a huge consideration is here whether the proposed building will affect the light air and circulation of any adjoining properties. The accessory building would fill up more space at the front of the subject parcel with proximity to the north properties, home being over a hundred and eighty feet. There are existing natural features between the surrounding properties and the adjacent property. The staff recommends that the special use permit be denied as it, it is recommended that this adds living space, this added living space should be connected to the principal residence if they would like to add. Township doesn't currently allow for accessory dwelling units from the provided documentation. This is, this use is interpreted as an accessory dwelling unit. Additionally, similar sized parcels in the area do not have comparable sized accessory buildings. It should be the largest proposed accessory building in the general area. Can I answer any questions from the planning commission?
It's staff recommending that we proceed, or you are recommending that we, we deny this request. I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I hear both.
Yeah, you can proceed through this whole, I mean, you can, you can propose, postpone, or you, you can do whatever you want.
But right, what is staff's recommendation?
That we deny this applicant, this applicant's request for a type-two special use permit.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we hear from the applicant before we, generally before we have discussion, we hear from the applicant, but.
Just a second. We go ahead, Member Nordo. I'm just going to ask if they had a separate well and septic system for this, that there's living space. Okay, I don't see it on these drawings. I'm going to ask Mr.
Yeah, you typically, we ask questions of her before we go to the.
You're right.
So let's finish up any, excuse me, sorry, let's finish up any questions we have for the.
Member Bruno.
So R one is the smaller of the residential zoning, correct? R one is actually an acre and less?
Yes.
But yet this is four acres?
No, R one is the larger of the two. Let me look at our zoning ordinance, because I don't know what our requirements are.
Any other questions for the planning director?
I have one last one. I hate to open this can of worms, but. So I know historically, what you've said is, is absolutely spot on, but I had empathy and I went to look to see why someone might propose something like this. If you go to R one and R two in our zoning ordinance, section six point zero three says use is permitted by right, and any R one or R two single family residential district, no building or land, no building singular or land shall be used, and no building shall be erected except for one or more of the following specified uses unless otherwise provided in this ordinance, so that all sounds pretty standard boilerplate. Item number one, single-family detached homes, except for mobile homes and earth shelter dwellings. Kind of caught my eye. I always read it as you were allowed a, a single family detached home, but it's a single family, not a single, single family. So we have plural in there.
So more than one family can live on that site?
Nope, you can have one family, but they can have multiple homes. Does that present a problem?
Does staff concur with that, or are we misreading it?
That is not, that is, we cannot allow more than one unit.
I, I would agree, but should we make a motion at the end of this to clean, to clean this up?
Clean and everything up in the zoning ordinance. So, and that would be another conversation before we go too far, is that, you know, this historically accessory dwelling units are not something that I understand the township has been interested in.
Yeah, never.
However, we are, you know, looking at our zoning ordinance, and this is probably something when we're looking at the R one and R two, the conversation should at least be had if that's something that the township is interested in, and in what capacity we would like to do that. So right now, no, you know, historic interpretation of our zoning ordinance has always been one single-family home. I think it's saying single-family homes as in, within these districts, single-family homes are allowed. And I don't think that we would veer from that because there's historically, in, in all the years that we've had the zoning ordinance, it's been very clear that ADUs are not allowed.
I would agree. I was just wondering, do we have, I did a quick cursory search, do we say anywhere ADUs aren't allowed, or has it just been historically that way? I couldn't find anything.
I don't know.
Was defined somewhere.
Yeah.
I'm reaching. In the nine years that I've been sitting up here, every special use for an accessory building that's been approved here has had the, as I'm sure you all are familiar, the contingency that it cannot be used for living space or to run a business. So, that's just, that's the way everyone, that's the precedent that has been set.
I think it actually says that in the auxiliary dwell, in the auxiliary building part. So I think we're good here, but what if someone ever comes back wanting for the second home?
We'll add that to our list. We have a lot of work to do, and we're going to be doing it together over the next six months.
Awesome.
Okay, do any other members have questions for the planning director? All right, I'd like to ask Mr. Butterworth to come up and give us your viewpoint. Please give us your name and address.
Doug Butterworth, fifty eighty-five Quincy Street, Hudsonville, Michigan. I'm the builder of the home and the accessory building proposed. The home itself, I guess, I tried to get a hold of Madison, obviously, I couldn't get a hold of her to answer questions, but the home itself is built as a multi-generational home. It's for two parents, their married daughter and their teen kids that all live in Cascade there. So the way the house is designed, it's a six-bedroom house, they only need five. When we put this together for the, the outbuilding, we were never thought of it as a, you know, whatever you called it, accessory dwelling unit. But it is set up for exercise. To, there was a shower put in it for that reason and for the, the shop area, if somebody wanted to shower there, the shower can go away. I had these conversations with Madison, think, you know, that, and I knew it wasn't, you know, it, it even says in the report, the accessory dwelling units aren't allowed, but we didn't think that that's what that was. It's an extra space. These kids are fifteen, thirteen, and twelve. So they're going to be looking for maybe another place to go be quiet, or even grandpa and grandma to go to a different place so it can be quiet. These kids are going to have friends, they're going to have, you know, that type of thing, so we're, we're working, this is the first house I've done like this, and, and I've been doing this, this is my thirtieth year. So it's the first house I've built like this that is set up that way, but I, I can tell you that, that there's a lot of that, that's probably going to be happening over the next, you know, many years. As far as the size, I'm not sure, this owner wants to put everything inside if he can, I mean, that's just who he is, he's, you know, the second home I built for this, for these owners. But the size, on that parcel, we're allowed two eight hundred and thirty-two square foot buildings. So really, it's sixteen sixty, you know, if we could combine the buildings, we could build two separate ones, but we wanted to combine it under one roof. So in our calculations, we're really only off by two hundred and ninety-four square feet. I make the heights, I make the, the setbacks from the side yard. Again, I didn't get a chance to talk to Madison. We didn't have any cooking appliances in that loft area. There's a refrigerator and a sink. The bathroom is actually on the main level by the garages. So I guess that, that was what I was trying to get an interpretation of, what makes that an accessory dwelling unit? That we can change, you know, what we have to, to accommodate that, but that's really what it was designed for, is for somebody to get away, they're going to go to college, that, you know, maybe they need a place to go study away from siblings. Or again, the, the owner, the grandparent would like to have a place to maybe get away a little bit too, but.
So it's more like a sleeping or study loft?
Yeah, there's no sleeping up there, there's no bed. I mean, we showed some exercise equipment up there, a table in the middle, kitchenette, you know, just to be able to have a, a small fridge, that type of thing. It was never intended for, for dwelling. They don't need the dwelling, they actually have a guest suite that we built in the house for guests that come and go, or kids that maybe, and those kids, if they're going to stay in the rooms, the rooms are big, and it's a six thousand square foot house for five people. So, or seven people with married couples at that point, but. So really, that's what it came down to. Again, I didn't get a chance to talk to Madison about what made, made the determination that was an accessory dwelling unit. We did have the conversation when I turned it in, and I think it even says in the report that she told me that it was, you know, it wouldn't be allowed, so I was like, okay, it's not, it's not what that is. But evidently, we were, you know, it got miscommunicated somehow, or I needed, you know, change in there, I wish I had known that before, and I tried to get a hold of her, of course, I couldn't today. As far as this goes, you know, the options that were presented, I believe, was you got either table this, or you can make a decision, or you can do what you want, but we, we, I guess, would like the feedback of how we got to where we got, you know, and, you know, either table the thing, and I'll, and I'll adjust it to, to fit the, to fit the ordinance. But I don't want to, if, if you guys make a decision, does that mean that we can't come back with something else and ask again, how does that work here? I've never, I've always been at the zoning board of appeals, I've never done a planning commission appeal, I guess, at this point.
You can always come back and try again.
Yeah, it was, most ZBAs, you get one shot.
ZBA is different.
That's the final, that's the final stop.
Okay, so I've tried to figure out the process as well as, you know.
Yeah, you can come back here.
Okay, we just want to make sure we're, we're getting it right.
May I speak process-wise? I think, considering that the applicant is here and amenable to making, I think that you guys will agree, and I think you'd come to this anyway, you probably don't need me to say it, but the applicants here are amenable to making changes. Obviously, a denial would mean that we'd need a new application, but you are open to adjusting your site plan, postponing it until the next planning commission, we actually, it would be the May sixth planning commission hearing, you could work with staff on refining the plan and.
Yeah, with the proper insight, I mean, I will bring something that works, but like I said, we just.
Member Reese.
If there are any questions for the applicant, I'd like to go to the public hearing.
I have a couple of questions. Are you going to drop the two hundred square foot pool building?
You know, I talked to Madison before this all started, and I, she said, if you build it under two hundred square feet, it won't count in your square footage. So that's why we put it up at two hundred, I could have made that a lot bigger. The house is, you know, is quite extensive. We could have made that a lot bigger, but she said, keep it under two hundred square feet, you can have a shed or whatever on your property that doesn't affect the square footage reason, so that's why it's there. So no, to answer your question, we're, it's there, it's built, so.
Is that consistent with our ordinances? I mean, because it's, the way I read, what you wrote down was that two hundred counts as one of the accessory buildings, he gets another accessory building not to exceed eight hundred.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a maximum square footage, it, it's every single building can be eight hundred and thirty-two square feet, or it comes to the planning commission for a, a type-one special use.
So, so that two hundred would count as one accessory?
It would count as one of the accessory buildings.
Okay.
Member Nordor. I, I just wanted to get some information on well and septic, which plans there?
That, that lot is served by municipal water and sewer.
Oh, good.
So.
Other questions from the members for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to now have a, entertain a motion to go to public hearing.
Make a motion to go to public hearing.
Support. Member, member Nord, Ike, Nordic, made the motion, remember Reese seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now open for a public hearing. Would anybody like to make a statement, ask a question? Anybody online? Nobody online.
Motion to close public hearing.
Member Nord Hook. Okay, remember Reese made the motion, member Nord Hook seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Is discussion?
I, I, I think the inevitable outcome, I guess I've been out here, I'm not going to play the new card anymore, I've been here long enough, and I've seen enough of these.
Pretty soon I could play with that card.
This was the perpetual end to where we've been going. Eight thirty-two has become a standard of about two thousand, two thousands become a, one from a barn to a bathroom to a shower. And this is just the trajectory, if only Moore's law, we were going to get here, and here we are. And this is why I've been against going past eight thirty-two for the fifteen months I've been here.
So you're supportive of this, is what I'm hearing?
I, I think at some point, you know, there's, there's not a stove, but, you know, there's, there's a grill in the garage. I mean, at some point, we are going to have multi-family homes in a R one district, and I think that's the wrong direction, especially in R one. I know that some of what we did was, you know, two thousand square feet in arc because they need to shower off the horse manure. So that kind of makes some sense, but I think we got to start taking account where this is located.
Member Reese.
Two comments. One, in response to Member Bruno's comments, somebody builds a six thousand square foot house on four, five acres or more of land, they're going to have some stuff, and they're going to need a place to put it. So I kind of understand the need for accessory buildings. I think that, that goes with homes in that, in that scale. That being said, I understand your trajectory theory and where we're headed. Normally, in cases like this, we usually have an accessory building inventory list, am I wrong about that, in the packet? And it's nice to be able to use that to, as a point of reference, because we have accessory buildings in the township that are five thousand square feet. It's, but it's nice to have a reference as to where those are in comparison to this, but I agree, there's nothing quite this large near there that I'm aware of, but needless to say, the applicant could have two eight hundred and thirty-two square foot buildings, which is a total of over sixteen hundred square feet. He's asking for nineteen, or I'm sorry, it's a total of eighteen, or yeah, eighteen hundred, and he's asking around nineteen hundred and something? So. Right.
Three hundred over, plus two hundred over, so it's five hundred over, which is roughly a third, so thirty-three percent over.
Excuse me, and he's got a third accessory building then? No, because you're combining, he already has an accessory building, right?
He's allowed two.
So he gets one more at eight, eight thirty-two.
Correct.
Not one more at sixteen.
So he's, so he's asking for nineteen fifty-eight.
That's the thing, we started, started on this path of, well, we get two eight thirty-two, so is that equivalent to one sixteen sixty-four?
So, on four point four acres, he's allowed three, two, or just two?
Two.
Three, I have to go to that section. Commissioner Bruno, I want to respond to Commissioner Bruno's comment earlier, just, so the R one is, you're actually allowed almost an acre, forty, forty thousand square feet, which is almost an acre. R two is eighteen hundred square feet, so a little bit under half of that. I wanted to clear that up for you.
So R one is the, say it again?
R one is the larger.
Okay, thank you.
The lower density, so larger.
Okay, three to six acres is permitted to accessory buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So he already has one.
Okay.
Okay, so he gets one more, but no, he only wants one more, and I'm, I'm not being a jerk here, I'm just, right, it's one more at nineteen hundred square feet, right? I don't like the bathroom, I don't like the kitchen. I would like to see, listen, expand the poolhouse to eight hundred square feet, build this one eight hundred square feet. Now you got your two at, you know, sixteen hundred square feet, or drop the poolhouse and make, you know, drop the poolhouse, take the kitchen out, make the bath just a half bath.
I, I I don't think I know, I, I don't think I could support that. I would, you're going to make, I think I have two small buildings as opposed to, to one large one, and then a pool, a pool shed?
Or, what I said was either have the poolhouse be bigger and have an eight hundred, nine hundred square foot accessory building, or drop the poolhouse, drop the two hundred square foot poolhouse and make one big building that encompasses the poolhouse as well, right? That's part of it, and, but you get, get rid of the, go down to a half bath.
Because if we're going to change precedent here, I think that's a conversation we have without an applicant waiting for a response, right? We have a, a meeting to change our process. But our process in the past, if they have a two hundred square foot shed in the backyard, and they come in and ask to build a fifteen hundred square foot accessory building, generally, we've been reasonable to that. We haven't told them that they have to combine the two unless they're over the maximum number that they're allowed, historically speaking.
Member Bruno.
Well, that's in history, is like the last three or four meetings, historically, for my first ten months on there, it was eight thirty-two, we'd go a little bit over twenty percent over or something. We're, 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 we're supposed to be enforcing ordinances or, or bending them to, to be good citizens of the community, not legislating. The ordinance says two eight thirty-two buildings, it doesn't say or one sixteen sixty-four. So I agree with you, if, if, if. So I agree with you. If, if, if we want to start approving these, then let's make a motion to the Board of Trustees. To change the zoning ordinance that puts that bullying in there that you can add these, and. We're doing something that I don't think we were tasked to do. I think we're, we're outside the scope of our assignment here as commissioners in my opinion.
Commissioner Nord, I guess his hand up.
Member Nord. Maxly, I, uh, I wanna be cognizant that we've heard from this applicant that staff has inferred certain things. And Madison's not here to answer that, and I know that I suspect the outcome is that we're going to table this. And I'd like to hear if Madison did in fact make that commitment, because I think that we need to, to respect it. We may not like it. I, I don't know what was said, but if our staff is making inferences, uh, that something won't count, then perhaps it's fair to count it, right? Like, I, I, I get it.
Yeah, I would agree with that, but what does, does that impact a nineteen fifty-eight square foot building?
I don't, I mean, if it's all garage, my, my, you know, like, I, I think the issue here is the components that could. Make it an ADU, not to this owner, but to the next one, and I think I, I don't wanna speak for staff, but I suspect that's where she was going. And, and, you know, I, I do a lot in California and ADUs are incredibly hot there right now, and this is what we see. And, and, you know, and, and for good reason, right? But we as a township have taken a, a, an approach where we, we don't. Want ADUs, or at least that's not something that we have an appetite for at this moment, and so I, I think. Perhaps, uh, if I could be so bold, we might consider giving this applicant some feedback on reducing. Some of the things that would make this or classify this as an ADU. Given the size law, I don't have as much of an issue with the large garage, like. You know, that's what they're gonna put there. It's wooded, it's not, you know, I, I don't, I don't hear or see any neighbors here, you know, upset that. And we've seen lots of neighbors, uh, in the past. I'm not seeing them out here yelling that this garage is, is too big, so that's just my take.
What about the next neighbor?
What's that?
So you're worried about the next owner, what about the next neighbor? Who comes in and says.
I draw, I, I don't know if you had an opportunity to drive out there, like, it's, it's well covered, like, they'd have to rip out all the trees and, you know. Like, that, that's where, like, again, yeah, if, if it was like, you know, open and obvious, then yeah, I, I agree with you. I just don't know that the next neighbor would see it or know it.
Good point.
It's not on Linda.
Yeah, it's, it, to me, it's the, it's, it's multiple things, right? It's the kitchen, it's the bathroom, it's the size, it's, they already have another one. Okay, yeah, I mean, like. And I don't think you guys did this intentionally, right? But it's like, I, I feel like they're pushing it, right? And so my feedback would be make it a little smaller, get rid of the kitchen, go to a half bath. That would be my feedback. So, I don't know if you guys have any other feedback.
Members' feedback.
Well, I agree with. I agree with, uh, member Bruno that. Allowing two eight hundred and thirty-two square feet, uh, accessory buildings does not also then mean that we allow one. Sixteen sixty-four, I've never heard that before. To go beyond sixteen sixty-four.
With all those features.
Yeah, I mean, a little bit beyond, okay, but that's, that's.
Yeah, like an A is an A, right? Plus or minus ten percent.
Yeah.
What if I test the waters? I'm getting a nod, don't do it.
Well, I, I, I also think with, with our, and, and I, maybe, maybe this isn't the first person we do this on, but I, I, I'm also. Listening to the new staff, right? They have all new staff, all new processes, and we're about to have all new, uh, master plans and all new zoning ordinances. The, the, the hundred and fifty dollar fee is for someone to do due diligence on. So if they come back with something radically different. Then all this work has to be done again. So what is the likelihood it's gonna come back radically different versus a tweak? So. I would like to start something new, maybe I might get shot down, but cognizant of our time, cognizant of our staff's time, cognizant of our township's budget. I would make a motion to deny.
I wouldn't support that. I wouldn't support that. I, I, I think we give him feedback, give him a chance.
He, he made a motion, let's see if he gets a support on it.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by member Bruno, seconded by member Richardson. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Two, two, five.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll take a stab at this. I'd like to make a motion to. Careful how I word this. Approve the special use permit with the square footage allowed up to seventeen hundred square feet. And the building. Uh, have a half bath and no kitchen area. And improve, and, and include our usual language that it cannot be used as a residence. Uh, or to run a business and any outdoor lighting has to match our ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
That's only like forty-some feet more than you'd have if you had two eight hundred and thirty-two.
Second that.
So would you go, would you go rather than just random numbers? Would you do the? Two eight thirty-twos? Like, where's the seventeen? Would you do sixteen sixty-four? So at least, at least we have some foundational logic behind it.
He, he made his motion.
I made a motion of seventeen.
But he can go up to seventeen, so maybe he comes in at sixteen.
He designs the building and giving him a little bit of leeway.
Okay, motion by member Reese, seconded by member Roland. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
Those, you two? Just, just. Same two, okay.
Agree.
So five fours, two against.
So it passes.
Okay, five, five in favor to oppose, it passes. Thank you. Okay. You, Mr. Butterworth for coming in.
Thank you.
Sorry, it was painful.
Okay, uh, Article eight, uh, case number twenty-four thirty-eight twenty. Uh, property owners of Patrick Clay, eighty-two thirty, fifty-second street in Elto. Andrea?
Okay, so this is another, uh, specially, our special use permit type one. Um, for an accessory, not dwelling unit, accessory unit on the property. The subject property is zoned ARC. To the north, we have R one. Um, and to the south on fifty-second is all also ARC. The. Approximate lot size is ten acres. And it's currently, uh, used as a residential property. Uh, the proposed garage is sixteen hundred square feet with a hundred, or with a four hundred and thirty-two square foot porch. For a total of two thousand square feet. The garage is designed, uh, to match the existing building. Uh, the site currently has a pool and shed near where the accessory building is proposed. The applicant has indicated that they will first be getting. Uh, rid of the pool prior to construction of the new garage. Ten acre parcel also has a horse barn that measures fifty by thirty-two square feet. Fifty feet by thirty-two square feet. Uh, this is historic to the property along with a small shed. These are located further south of the property behind where the proposed new garage is. Uh, the building height of the garage is eighteen. Or the, is eighteen feet as measured to the midpoint of the roof. The height requires side yard setbacks of forty feet. According to the, uh, table one of the zoning ordinance, and the proposed side yard setback is seventy-eight. This meets the standards. The west, south, and north elevation show wall sconces on the building. This appears to be downcast in accordance with the lighting standards of our ordinance. The applicant is, the applicant is aware and has confirmed that the garage will not be used for a dwelling space and is for personal storage. The planning department has not received any public comments on this request. And the applicant has indicated that utilities will not interfere with the proposed garage as they are to the southeast of the, of the house. Uh, this information will be concerned, uh, confirmed prior to permits being issued. Recommendation for this. This case is approval. With the following conditions, all outdoor lighting adheres to the Cascade Township's ordinance standards, and the accessory building may not be used for dwelling. Dwellings or home occupations.
Any questions by the members for Planning Director Hendrick?
As I understand it, there's two buildings already on the property. And ten acres, they can have three, correct? And that's three at eight hundred and thirty-two?
I believe that they had, in, in. Please. I believe that there's one, the pool, and then this will be the second.
The pool house ago, okay.
So this will be the second of three allowed.
Okay.
Okay, member Bruno.
I read it differently. I thought there is a pool ten by ten shed. This one being fifty by thirty-two, and there's a ten foot by eight point five, so there's three currently. I mean, there's, there will be. I read it differently. Alright, so I guess my next question is, I'm, I'm a bit confused on that. Everything flows, and we get to page forty-two, and there's an environmental health addition change review where there's changing number of bathrooms. And then there's an addition.
Yeah, I saw that.
What are pages forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five? Do they have anything to do with the subject matter in front of us? Has the right address.
Forty-two.
Different days.
That, I think, yeah, I don't know why that was. I think that was just there to show you where the septic system was.
Yeah, but there's a bathroom change.
Yeah, let's not be.
Come on up, yeah, come on up.
That was, Madison had put those in there to show that they didn't interfere with the septic.
Please introduce yourself in your.
Clay, eighty-two thirty, fifty-second street. She asked about if I had any indications of where the utilities are, and it's pole, electric pole, so it comes up the west end of the property. And so I did have that for an application for a, a addition to the home. And so I included that to show that, hey, this is where the well is, this is the septic, and this confirmed by the health department.
I was trying to. Yeah, I saw that, I have that on my notes to, that question.
Any other questions for Mr. Clay, as long as you're up here?
Is the pool shed remaining when the pool is removed, or is it going out?
For, being approved, then it'll come out.
Understood.
Thank you.
So he'll. Any other questions?
One barn and a chicken coop, but we're not gonna really.
Just out of curiosity, it's so close to the house, why not connect it to the house, then you don't have to talk to us?
It's actually about. Thirty feet, twenty-eight. It's a little bit further than that. I, if, if you make me, I will, but I would rather not.
I've seen people build these things so close, I'm like, you don't even have to see us if you just connect it, you know?
Post me, it came off.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, uh, can we have a motion to go to a public hearing?
Make a motion to go to public hearing.
Okay, motion by member Nord, uh, supported by member Reese. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now open for public hearing. Would anybody like to come up or, and give us your opinion? Name and address, please.
Uh, Frederick Byam, eighty-one forty-seven fifty-second, I'm to the north. We support his proposal. Uh, actually think that having agriculture in Cascade Township is amazing. It's a dirt road. Fully fits the, 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 the natural beauty of the road, what they're doing, and whoever made the comment that. If you, if you have big property and a lot of stuff, mowers, tractor, a trailer. Like, if you want the agricultural nature of Cascade Township to exist where it belongs, where it's zoned, you should do things like this. Thanks.
Need a place to store.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up and saying something.
Thank you. Anybody else for public hearing? Any comments? No comments. Okay, we have a motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion by member Reese, supported by member Nord. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Uh, further discussion by members.
I'm good with this, as long as he drops that building when he does the pool.
Alright, I'll, uh.
Thank you.
Make a motion to, uh, approve the application as requested with the conditions that. Can't be used for living space or to run a business, outdoor lighting has to, uh, match our ordinance, and, uh. The, uh, pool shed needs to be removed within, uh, um, ninety days of the, uh. Final, uh, building permit inspection.
Hey, do I have a second? Support. Member Norduk supports. Uh, member Reese's motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? None noted, seven zip. Congratulations, Mr. Clay.
And I'd just like to say for the record, for Mr. Bruno, I checked in that area. And the majority of the homes in there have buildings that are at or in excess of what he requested. I mean, right next door, there's thousands of more square feet.
I would agree. I looked at satellite imagery.
Okay.
That's why I didn't dissent on that one, but I still think we're legislating from, from the wrong position. I think if this is what we're gonna do, then we need to change the ordinance. I'm not against big buildings. I'm against going against the rules when we're breaking.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay.
Your next item is, uh.
Article nine.
The sports complex that can't have a gym, according to the PUD. Isn't it named recreational? What's the name on that?
Sports and recreation.
No, no, the name of the PUD is sports and recreation, but they had to come in to get permission to have a gym. It's just the irony of it is kind of funny.
I actually had to read that for, I even went and looked at PUD number thirty to see, like, is this all transposed?
Okay, our applicant is Michael Goodsell. Uh, property, uh, is forty-nine oh one twenty-eighth street. Uh, for twenty-eighth street fitness LLC. Uh, Andrea?
So, as you mentioned, this is, uh, forty-nine oh one twenty-eighth street. This is located in PUD thirty, which is called Sports and Recreation. This PUD is just on the north side of twenty-eighth street with three different parcels included, so it has. Um, what used to be the sports and recreation in the nineties, and then that went out of business and we got the Bed Bath and Beyond, and. Actually, we got Toys R Us and Babies R Us. And Bed Bath and Beyond came in, now on the east por- portion of the propos- of the building that's asking for a gym, we have, um. Total Wine located there, and they are asking for plus or minus forty thousand square feet. I believe, let me get the right square footage. Thirty-nine, two hundred and fifty square feet for a athletic facility. So, as, as indicated in the staff report, um, the allowed uses in B one and B two. Are special land uses in the PUD thirty. Um, and a gym isn't technically, um, defined in our ordinance, so we, we said this would be. An athletic club, which is a. Allowed use in the B two zone district, which means that it would be special use here. So, because, um. The applicant isn't asking for a new site plan, what we would be doing is approving the existing site plan. On this property that was approved back in nineteen ninety-five for the Bed Bath and Beyond. With the addition of, with a few minor additions, and that will be up to the planning commission. So to the north, we have industrial area. This is an area that we're master planning for kind of a mixed use, you know, Scott, we, we have, um. We'll have some different mixed use options there that we'll be playing with when we, um, revisit the zoning ordinance. And then we have this twenty-four, twenty-eight street lot, so we wanted to kind of have a conversation about what we wanted for the. Future land use there, and that's why we looked at the interior of the lot. Um, I think the proposed use is appropriate, um, given all of the site. Elements. But a couple of things that the planning commission should consider in this, we'll start with the signage. Um, the signage for this building is a two hundred square feet, this unit of, of. The building is allowed two hundred square feet. The building is allowed two hundred square feet. Uh, for wall signs. That is what our PUD thirty says right now, but in investigating the history of this property. The what used to be Babies R Us expanded their building into where. The Bed Bath and Beyond was, which gave them more of the floor area of that existing building. I did find a letter from the planning director at the time that increased their. Uh, their square footage for the for the wall sign. However, we never amended the PUD. So technically, our PUD says they can have two hundred square feet. But the letter would imply that. That square footage should be proportionate to the square footage or the square footage of the signage should be proportionate to the square footage that each unit has to the building. If that makes sense.
But it but it right here in in the detail, you said the original PUD allegation for wall signage. Was based on the percentage of the building occupied by each unit. So if that percentage of the building that so the sign should be based on whatever the percentage.
Of the unit. It doesn't say that in our PUD thirty. It's implied.
Member Reese.
Okay. Do we know how much signage total uh beer and wine is using or whatever?
Yes, so the total square footage of signage allowed for the entire PUD. Is two hundred and seventy square feet, two hundred and seventy-five. I have to quick look in here. I put the special land use letter in here that.
In the past, we have been. Sticklers on signed signs. We've been pretty firm on that. We're usually not very flexible.
Sure, uh, but again, this is a situation where we.
Saying that's the way it's usually been.
So do we know? Do we know how much Babies R Us is using? Is that what you're checking?
Babies R Us is gone, right?
But this but the Total Wine use the same square footage.
Sorry, Total Wine, yeah, so.
So they were they were they were per. They were permitted, uh, according to this, Babies R Us was permitted a hundred and thirty-one square feet, but then you're saying they added on and they got more square footage. Okay.
No, they were originally allotted seventy-five. Square feet, two hundred for the for what we'll call the east unit regardless of the use and seventy-five for the no. Two hundred for the west unit.
Right, seventy-five for the east. Okay, member Bruno.
Then the bear.
If we cut to the chase though, didn't the township and the developer come to an agreement? If we cut that last sentence where we've agreed on the middle road?
Yes. So.
I'd still like to know how much, what signage uh Total Wine has.
A hundred and forty-four, it says in there.
Says it one forty-four?
Yep, I have to go through the staff report.
For one of forty-four signs between the two.
I think she's right. That leaves a hundred and thirty-one for the.
Yeah.
For what it's worth, I looked at.
Oh, expanded.
PUD that came in front of us before.
And so one thirty-one is what Crunch is supposed to have.
How many square feet of building?
I don't know. I don't know off the top of my head.
It's based on building.
I didn't put the calculation in here. I don't remember.
Thirty-one is what Crunch is supposed to have and what are they asking for?
They're supposed to have one forty-four. Actually, technically, this is where we never amended the PUD.
Right.
So it's gonna be hard for us to say. You're only allowed this because. We did something to the east building, but we never finished up the process by amending the PUD. To say now you're only allowed one hundred and forty-four square feet.
Okay, but hold on, so two seventy-five total.
Yep.
Right? That breaks down to one forty-four and one thirty-one.
Correct.
They're saying, listen, instead of one thirty-one, we just won't. We'd like one forty-four as well. So two sides at one forty-four.
No, they're saying instead of the one forty-four, could we have an additional, what is it, thirty feet and go to one? Seventy.
It's Madison has it summarized on page fifty-two after the picture.
One seventy-two.
You read the ordinance from their point of view, they think they get two hundred. If you read the ordinance from our point of view, it's one forty-four. The two parties said would one seventy-two work and it sounds like everybody's.
Halfway in between.
The question is, is do we agree with that agreement?
Yeah.
No.
Seriously, we just gave three point one seven five square footage of our ordinance. And we're not gonna give three hundred square feet on a wall sign.
Thirty square feet.
Thirty square feet in a wall sign, yeah. Right? Actually, it's twenty-nine, but.
I hope you're making humorous because otherwise, like, we are in trouble. If this is.
Apples and apples. In fairness, one is a sign, one is an accessory building.
Well, one could be an Airbnb next door.
I'm sorry, am I not entitled to my opinion? Okay, well, guess what? I'm sorry, I'm I'm signage, right? I think what people want to do on their own property and woods is completely different than. Crapping up Cascade Road and twenty-eighth street, right? I mean, with the Drewry Hotels and stuff. I mean, sorry. I threw a warrior shot across the bow. No offense to Crunch Fitness, so.
Ah, unfortunately, we don't know what Planning Director Daryl P. Schmizzle. Schmizzle was doing in nineteen ninety-eight with us because it's not here, but. Do do we know if Total Wine used all of the. Square footage that they were given for their sign, the hundred and forty-four feet, was it? Or did they use a hundred and twenty-eight foot sign?
Yeah, that it was the full.
Well, there is sometimes and it must have been across the street, but there was an Ed Mark development where there was. Lots of signage that wasn't actually being used.
So, Mr. Roland, let me try this more maybe more appropriately rather than digging into. They could hire a law firm by the looks of it in demand two hundred.
How? The total allowed is two seventy-five, so explain the math.
So let me explain. So the PUD, that is an adopted ordinance, allocates two hundred square feet. To the unit that they would like to use and seventy-five to what now is. Total Wine.
And that's before Total Wine took on more.
Correct, but the ordinance was never amended.
So the ordinance said.
Entitled the two hundred.
They have, they have, they both have two hundred and they have graciously been willing to settle for one seventy-two.
We're gonna clean it all up together. It's gonna be great.
Thank you. So the catch would be, as we, are we, you haven't even finished, have you?
That's just a sign.
So in doing this, then we would be not only be amending the square footage allowed at this building, but also at. The Total Wine side to match, right? So the language would be clear. So let's say Total Wine moves out in. Nine months and that tenant moves in. We don't have the same conundrum moment right now, right?
So. I have not in this application, no one has proposed an amendment to the PUD. Because what they're doing would not. Trigger an amendment because they're not using the full.
Well, what I'm saying is, shouldn't we be doing that? To fix this?
Sure. So I think that we would just change the language. That would be something that we're kind of looking at the whole. This is, I don't think it is. Seriously important that we deal with this right this second. Total Wine seems pretty well, but I think that when we. Address kind of the whole PUD rollback, having a conversation about. The onerous nature of our PUD situation right now, this will be one of the. The items that we will check off in kind of administrative.
So.
Amendment process.
So I apologize, this is out of order, but. I like to look at it holistically and I kind of like this. We've been talking about kind of this kind of bonus system. So. The staff, just like they've recommended denying with the previous application, this application, they say that they would like to say they should have a bike path, possibly. A connect connectivity. They have open parking spaces and maybe a bike rack. So I'm more of the mindset rather than. Squabbling over square footage on a sign where it looks like they're truly entitled to two hundred and willing to go to one seventy-two. Agree to the one seventy-two with the conditions of getting something for our citizens.
A bike path and bike rack.
My.
Wait, wait a minute. Member Reese.
Yeah.
Like to ask the applicant to come forward. Mr. Goodso.
Sorry, uh, yeah, my name is actually.
We're nice with you, we just fight with each other.
Okay, well, you can fight with me if you want. I'm actually attorney representing uh 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 the applicant. Um, I'm here along with uh. Um, with the owner as well, who's happy to um answer any questions you may have, but I I guess I didn't get what what was the question or. Are we presenting our?
Presentments.
Oh, okay.
Please.
All right, thank you. Uh, I didn't know if there was a specific question.
Just give us your side of the story.
Sure, sure. So, um, yeah, it's it's a pretty, it's a pretty minor. I mean, it's a it's a minor use change for this. It's a, you know, on a vacant. Uh, Bed Bath and Beyond. I think it's a very good um, uh, fit for this. Um, you you know, the plane department concurs. We've submitted a narrative in support of that statement. Um, there's a few recommendations in there just to cut to the chase on a couple of those. Um, before I get to the signage issue, but um. The bike rack uh question, um, you know, there there was a suggestion for that. I'm not sure exactly. What that looks like, but my clients, you know, happy to to put in a bike rack. Um. There's a, yeah, so we 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 can, uh, we can handle that one. The paint um for the crosswalk for the pedestrians, that's that's fine too. Um, we weren't sure exactly about the suggestion regarding connectivity of the bike paths, just looking at the site. The issue I see and the concern from my client's perspective. Is, you know, this is a pretty long distance from an established dedicated bike path, so. And we're also a tenant, so we're not really in control of the site necessarily. So I mean, we're we're happy to, I mean, I. I frankly, I think that bike connectivity is great and um, you know, and it would benefit this use too. I think. People who are fitness inclined are gonna wanna bike to the gym. Um, so, but I just don't think there's a whole lot our client can necessarily do um on that front. Um, just to clarify the signage issue, um. Yeah, and not to step in the middle of all of this, but um, yeah, the the PUD, we followed the PD original. And the PUD says that this unit gets two hundred square feet of signage space. Um, you know, this issue about Total Wine signage space didn't really come up until now. Um, but from our perspective, we complied with the. Terms of the PUD and that's really the most we can do. Um, now, if a prior planning commission. Approved more space for the Babies R Us, which is now Total Wine. I, we don't know why they did that. I'm not sure why they did it, what the terms were of that or anything like that, but that was modifying. Section two, which was for the future retail user seventy-five square feet. So, long story short on that, I think it's pretty crystal clear in the ordinance and the PUD provision. That we would be entitled to two hundred square feet, but then discussing this with when the concern was raised because of the Total Wine issue. Um, we're willing to to meet them in the middle and um, we think that's a fair compromise.
Thank you.
So, yeah. So uh, if if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Um, uh, but otherwise, we'd ask for approval.
May I note too, Miranda from their team has been amazing to work with. We've been going back and forth on this. There's been a lot of give and take. It's been a a great relationship. I'm bummed that she's not here. You're great too.
Well, she she loved working with you on that, so I can at least convey that.
She was wonderful.
Member Reese, question?
Well, in that case, I make a motion to uh go to public hearing.
We have second. Support or. Our member Nordy made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in public hearing. Anybody in the audience want to make a comment? Anybody online?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support for. Uh, member Reese made the motion. Member Norduk seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I I would like to to point out, Chairman. I'm trying to implement um graph resolutions for you on your computer. So on your computer, there's a motion. Related to this.
I got it.
You got it.
I got, yeah, I'm looking right at it.
And and we're going to try to add into there more of exactly why we're approving things. But right now, this has probably become a practice. Let us know if you like it or if you don't. But member Reese, go ahead.
So my question is. Then I I don't know, I'm. Little green on this one. Adding a number eight to your draft that says we would amend the PUD to. Cement, if you will, the wall signage issue so it doesn't creep up again in the future. Is that, is that acceptable to staff or is that a bad idea?
I don't know that we want to make that a condition of approval for this site.
Do we need their consent to amend the PUD to say that?
We can do a township initiated amendment.
Okay.
That would handle that and then we would touch base with all the the property owner is here. Correct? Or the, okay.
Not not the underlying.
Okay.
If we don't need.
Okay.
If we don't need their help to do that, then I wouldn't put it on there, but my other concern that makes me want to put it on there is that. We have a fairly long list. If Madison was here, I think she would nod of different things that we've wanted to fix. That never come, you know, we say, oh, yeah, we'll we'll take care of that later, but they never come back around.
I agree.
And and so my concern is that by not putting it in there, I might slip through the cracks.
Can we, can we say something like we approve? This hundred and seventy-two square feet, however, if and when Crunch Fitness doesn't renew the lease and they move on. That it reverts back to. Then that hundred and seventy-two square feet goes away with Crush Fitness and the next applicant only gets. Hundred and fifty square feet as an example. Cause I don't, I keep, you know, we just.
I don't, I'm guessing we can't say they get less than the PP. Seventy-two two does not run with a lamp.
Yeah. The the problem is that it says the total is two seventy-five and you got thirty-one here and now, and I understand what you guys are saying. It's supposed to be seventy and two hundred, but. It it just, I mean, it's spinning out of control here and we gotta rein it back in.
It is, but. Okay, I think I know how to word this.
Member Bruno first.
I guess I have several points. So I like the draft. I like kind of where you're going with it. But you didn't even follow kind of your own recommendations. Um, that's what troubles me. I I would like to see this committee become more proactive on and looking at. The township, where he represents the citizen citizenry, not necessarily the business. We want to, we want to play fair and play nice and. They 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 bring entertainment or sports athleticism, makes us healthy. But I'd like to also make sure we balance what what the citizenry is not. And I really like what the new staff has recommended. There was a section in here and I don't know if I can. Pull it up fast enough, but. Um, and with my, these lights shining off my glasses. Um, the planning commission may require that the applicant add onsite pedestrian and bicycle circulation that provides connection to existing or planned bicycle facilities. We are planning, there there is an effort, right? I believe there's a grant that we're gonna put a bike trail on Burton over. Uh, what would it be, ninety-six?
Yes.
So within two parcels away, there's gonna be a path. And you have to start somewhere.
My 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 problem is, he's a renter though.
He's a renter, but could he?
This is a long ways away too.
Him to creatively look at something. He has an extra. Uh, or that he, I guess the underlying, they only need four hundred and eighty-eight parking parking places. They have five hundred and fifty-nine. So there's quite a few parking places between the west side of the building and Patterson.
Commissioner Bruno, may I, may I speak to that for a minute? Let me say this because I I put that in there kind of as an exercise to be thinking about it, but I did go and talk to the parks director. We did talk about pathways. And even internally, when we were talking about it, it's an exercise we need to do every single time we look at any kind of development. But we as staff looked at this and said, actually. Considering this development that already exists, considering that there's a sidewalk on the other side and we don't have any current plans. To extend the bike path onto Patterson on the east side, considering that there's a bridge. Um, that's only like ninety or is thirty feet wide that doesn't have any protected shoulders. It probably isn't the best use in this situation.
Okay.
So, but I do, you know, I'm trying to get you guys thinking about the.
I I read your notes and you're paid staff, so I was trying to advocate on your behalf, but if. If you're redacting your advocacy, then it's hard for me to back it, so. Member Reese.
As chairman of the Township Pathway Committee, uh, I am a little familiar on this topic. And it's about thirty-one hundred feet of path that would need to be built to get to the adjoining parcel. So that's that's from the end of the bridge to the uh, the adjoining parcel. And that would be if you took a shortcut. Through the, you know, along their drive off uh, off Patterson. That's not even going all the way up to twenty-eighth street and coming in from there, so. Uh, it's it's a long reach. It's a long ways away.
Could be coming in across from the Hilton, correct?
Yeah, essentially, that would be the shortest version. So, so, right, I think the point is that it's not there, it's a long ways away. I and I.
I, and I, I don't see a need to ask for an easement for a future pathway from them, because A. They might not be there in the future, and that would really be something that the property owner would need to give, not the tenant. And we don't have any plans for anything right there, there's already a sidewalk on twenty-eighth street, so, that's, you know. That's about the park a bike, I think is adequate.
Any other comments? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I could try and take a stab at it. Oh, yes, I, I'm really excited.
I'm gonna make you guys read everything out loud from here on out. Stay with me, it's gonna be fun.
In.
Question, why, why didn't we do this on the first two?
Because Madison did the other two, we're looking at implementing it, we've kind of been talking about it, eventually, it will be more of a set resolution. That actually says why we're approving it than the motion.
But why would you have, I mean.
I make one suggestion, though, we just approved bylaws that said we're gonna state the case number and yada, 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 at an approval, and that's not even written on this.
That's about what I was gonna say, but, yeah. So, I was about to say, in case number twenty-four dash three eight two one, forty-nine oh one twenty-eighth street. Make the motion to approve the special use permit and site plan review request twenty-eighth street fitness. To establish an athletic club with the following conditions, number one, the applicant. Application and plans submitted by the applicant, signed, dated, and stamped by the planning director shall con. Constitute the approved plans, except if the plan elements are amended in this. Resolution or not meets requirement of zoning ordinance, number two, that the use shall. Operate according to this application and per the testimony of the applicant, number three, the applicant shall comply with. Section seven of P U D thirty, furthermore, the applicant shall use the space previously allocated to the former tenant and the ground sign located. On Patterson and the pole sign facing twenty-eighth street. The allowed square footage allowed for the wall sign located on the south side of the building shall be one hundred and seventy-two square feet. Permission from the property owner of the off-site sign facing twenty-eighth street shall be granted in writing. That the application provide bike facilities onsite. I think that's meant to be uh in the form of a. Rack to park a bike in a safe spot, and that the applicant obtains all required permits prior to construction or operation. And that any expansion of the approved special use requires an additional review and approval by the planning commission. And I think I'd like to put something in there to the effect of that the applicant. Will be agreeable if the township amends the P U D to. Put in writing that the signage shall be one hundred and seventy-two square feet moving forward for that. Site. Well, not necessarily, because you could amend the other unit of the building to have the remainder.
So, what Maddie just whispered in my ear is that legal counsel is on if we want any opinion on if we can.
We always want legal opinion.
We should have known this at the beginning of the meeting.
Could have asked a lot.
Sorry. I was, I was raising my virtual hand, oh, sorry, I don't know if my camera's. Can you see me or hear me?
Yes, slowly.
This is Laura, Jenneh, um, yeah, I actually, I did raise my hand earlier, but I realized you guys didn't know I was here, so. Right, so I, I guess I have a little bit of hesitation with a condition that just requires them to be in agreement with a future. Potentially legislative action of the township, because I'm not sure what that looks like. If the township is going to amend the P U D, then that's what it's going to do, so I don't know what agreement looks like in that context.
Okay, well, then I can amend my motion to just be items one through seven as presented.
Oh, come on, it's boring, I want you to start all over again.
Read it again.
I'll eliminate item eight related to the amending the P U D, so that we don't have the confusion about the sign and the. I was just trying to clean up the mistake that was made.
Did you say, in the, and I'm sorry, cause I, I probably have to have you play it all over again, but did you say that the sign cannot exceed a hundred and seventy-two?
Yes, I did, that was item three B, the item, or the, the allowed square footage, the square, the allowed square footage allowed. For the wall sign located on the south side of the building shall be one hundred and seventy-two square feet, I didn't write this, but that's what it says.
It was me, I, it was all me.
All right, I have one question, do we want to, Mr. Goodcell, do we want to include your name in this motion? Or the tenant?
Well, the tenant's name.
It's right now, you're listed.
The applicant, that's why his name is in here.
I didn't say his name, it's not in the motion, I put the, the request of twenty-eighth street fitness.
My, my question is, before I agree to this, when it comes around to vote, while I like the thoroughness of it, but. The application and plans submitted by the applicant and signed dated and stamped by the planning director constitute, so if you happen to not. Stamp them, like, are we becoming so precise that if you've missed one of these steps, it's all null and mute?
No, we're just trying to make sure that the official plans that were adopted are the ones that are looked at in, in the future. They will be signed, stamped, and dated.
Because in the past, we've had revisions, and they've slipped them into the master plan, but they haven't been stamped, and so now we're going through the plans, and you're like, well, there's five pages here.
I love high bars, I just wanna make sure that they're, they're reachable.
Yeah.
Yep.
I will stamp and sign every page, I promise. Okay, uh, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
A second.
Member Bruno seconds it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, seven zero, thank you. Congratulations.
Does that bring us to our next case?
What, when is opening, when is the opening?
Yeah, they're done with you.
I, member Reese.
We were asking when the opening is.
When's your opening? Good luck.
Thank you. Mister Chair, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to, to remove uh case number twenty-three dash thirty-eight hundred from the table.
Do we have a second? So, I'll give that a sport.
Do we have any comment on that? Is there a concern there?
Yeah, a little bit, but I'm all right.
Okay.
Sir, is there a discussion, it'd be. I would love to hear why we would be removing it.
He's bringing it up so we can talk about it, we tabled it last time.
Oh, all right.
I just thought we were gonna address it, it's in, it's in the agenda.
I thought the same thing you did, I thought you were removing it from.
And, yeah, so now I'm bringing it.
All right, back, Robert's Rules of Order.
It's parliamentary procedure, technically, we're not supposed to table things, like, we're not supposed to leave something on the table when we close a meeting. We'll discuss all that later, but.
But we did.
Yes, we tabled it, you untabled it, removed it from the table, yes.
Well, if we have to have a vote, right, I made a motion, he supported it, so now I ask for a vote.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, seven zero.
I think now she can give her report, right?
That would require that I get to the right page.
Okay.
Sorry.
Miss generally the process.
We're having way too much fun this meeting.
I have a question, as long as we're changing everything.
Changing.
Can, can we start doing this like the inside, like, my kids now go to like an inverted classroom, even in college. This is like our reading assignment, I'm assuming we've all read this, like, for you to sit here and read it all to us again, doesn't seem necessarily the best use of our time.
I agree.
My question is, is, they were before us before, we asked them to do some things, it looks like they've done them all, can we just go to that checklist, we asked for A, B, C, D, E, F, and G? They've given us A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, thank you very much, good day.
I agree.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We absolutely can do that.
Okay.
Hey, can we have a representative for case number twenty-three thirty-eight hundred come up front?
Well, he's walking up, can I ask a question of staff? Since we kind of jumped past the staff report. My, my question is, at the beginning of the meeting. We talked about public hearings, you said there was a public hearing for all matters tonight, but we already had a public hearing on this.
Yes, you.
So, does this one have another public hearing?
Doesn't, you're absolutely correct, this doesn't require a public hearing, we didn't notice it public, for a public hearing for this meeting.
Okay.
Were, were the other two publicly noticed, even though they're not on our agendas, public hearings?
Yes, well. They are public hearings because they're special use permits, I think that because.
But they were noticed properly, right, for a public hearing?
Absolutely, yes, they were noticed and said to everyone. Um, I think though, I would suggest, because we didn't.
I'll address that when we get, after we get through this, I plan to say something about that.
We should kind of have, yeah.
Right, okay, name and address, please.
Yes, sir, Paul Henderson, Rosina Associates, fifty fifty-five Plainfield Avenue Northeast, Suite A, Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I was here last time, I think it was in December we were here last.
I remember.
Yeah, we had some. Some very clear marching orders for the next go-round, um, and as you mentioned, we have gone through our checklist and made sure we. Provided everything that was asked of us at that time. Assume you all have the uh plans in front of you, uh, the main changes are best illustrated on the landscaping plan. Sheet one oh four. Requested that we add some additional buffering on the sideline lines and increase the uh. Green space there, so you can see the plantings that we're proposing along the north and south, I'm sorry, east and west property lines. Um, we have also added some additional buffer plantings along fifty-second street. We also increased the setback for all the grave sites to thirty feet along the uh front edge. I saw that, it looked like you added twenty feet on the side too? Yes, sir, yeah. Excellent. Yep, so we took care of all those, those were the primary issues at that last meeting. Other than the coming up with a rule. Sort of maintenance rules, um, back, unfortunately, this. Project has spanned for different planners, Brian, and then Madison, and the, so. We're trying to keep up, and I appreciate everyone working with us, um, but.
And we were, appreciate your patience.
Yes, yes, absolutely, so, at this point, uh, at one point in the game, we thought we weren't gonna need a maintenance agreement. A fully recorded perpetual maintenance agreement. That came through discussions with Tim Dudley, the mosque attorney in Madison. Since now with the new uh planning staff, uh, I understand that they do, would like to see a full. Um, enforceable, you know, perpetual care agreement.
A plan.
Yes, sir. And uh, we're, we thought that was gonna be required of us originally. So, we have no problem providing that and having that as a contingency of our approval tonight. So, I believe that was the only other thing, other than the buffer, landscaping, and a set of rules. Uh, for per- perpetual, well, the rules we doubt with, I believe adequately. Um, it's a perpetual maintenance agreement that we need to work on.
Okay, any questions from the presenter?
Yeah, I apologize, I wasn't here in December, um, explain the grave blocks to me, I mean, cause I went on and I Googled a bunch of different. Sites, and is it just open top, open bottom, and brick walls, is that the?
They're, they're uh precast concrete.
Okay.
Vaults, um, there's no requirement to have a vault, according to state law, or the health department, but. Their faith, um. You know, the, the way they operate is, it's an open bottom vault with no bottom, concrete walls and a concrete top.
Okay, I was just curious, I wanna understand it, so.
The bodies aren't involved either.
Other questions?
I guess indirectly, I have two for, if I had you not read it all to us, I did have a few questions for you, so, maybe when you're done.
Any other questions for Paul?
Maybe one I could ask you, so there's a note in our staff report saying that they're waiting for a verdict from, I think, the K R. Kent County Road Commission, a cul-de-sac. I couldn't find a cul-de-sac anywhere in the drawings, so.
Yeah, there isn't one, sir, um, there were, at the last meeting, there was a public hearing. So, there's one residence at the end of the road, and they had um complaints of people turning around in their driveways. Even though the road, it's a gravel dead-end road with no turnaround, it's signed, you know, dead end, no turnaround. At the.
They wanted, they wanted fifty-second to swell out right there, so someone would have enough room to make a turn.
That was their hope, that they could, that um, the road commission could compel my, eh, my client. To make some improvements to the end of the county road there. I've um, since that meeting, have been emailing, um, and not to throw the, our good. County Road Commissioner, the bus are busy this time of year, but unfortunately, until we do an actual application for the entrance. I haven't gotten a response from the road commission, and they won't likely, but they will be looking at our entrance. And it's their job, they have a safety department, they have, you know. It goes around, and they'll look at all that as part of the review process for the entrance.
And then maybe this next one applies to as well, so if you're, obviously, you've read this. It says in here that the plan was submitted to the General Board Forward and uh, is included in our packet, their response.
Yeah.
Find that either.
So, we're familiar with their requirements, um.
With your like flowers being out there in this little uh drainage area, there's no word, worry about birds collecting or anything like that?
It's a drain, uh, I've done some other developments in the airport area, so I'm familiar with the concerns are. One is that the detention basin drain dry, so it doesn't attract birds, it's a drain dry detention basin. They have a, a list of um unacceptable tree types. Mainly uh fruit trees and fl- trees that would.
Attract birds.
Yeah.
And thus your listing of, where was this at here, the ginkgos and the.
Yeah, those are consistent with their approved list of trees.
Fantastic.
Yeah. So, those are their main issues, are no water to attract birds, and they have a list of. Trees they would rather not see.
Okay, so C one oh four summary is, is, is accurate.
Yes, sir.
But I think I have one more for you.
To my knowledge, I'm not a. Tree expert, but we've done other projects and followed their rules and guidance, and this is consistent with that.
Is there any um potential exit strategy if for some reason down the road? The uh nonprofit organization doesn't want to maintain this anymore, doesn't wanna keep the property, is there a exit strategy for? You know, I mean, removing bodies and.
Well, yeah, I don't anticipate that ever happening, um, well, I can't say ever, but. What I could see is that there be some language in the perpetual maintenance agreement for the township to take it over.
Okay.
I assume pretty much every cemetery that was ever originally constructed in the township was a faith-based uh. Church that started the cemetery and wasn't able to maintain it.
Right, okay.
So, I think that's something that can be dealt with in the perpetual care agreement.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Other questions for Paul?
I have one, but I'm hesitant to ask it, cause I'm not even sure I'm educated enough to formulate it correctly, but kind of that perpetuity. There was this, this debate about a faith-based cemetery versus a, I guess, non-faith-based. And the perpetuity, the, the way it's structured, did we get resolution on that there, I, I have to go back to the previous meeting, but.
The only difference between a faith-based and uh. A for-profit type uh cemetery are the rules at the state of Michigan.
Okay.
So, we are exempt from certain.
Yeah.
Something, wasn't it essentially like an escrow to make sure it could be maintained?
Yeah, we're exempt from that, we don't have to necessarily provide all the financials that a for-profit one. None of us are experts on it, cause this, everyone I talk to, this is my, we've added on to cemeteries, but I've never done a brand new.
I can think of the word as essentially escrow, I think, but I, I thought you were.
Other questions? Any other representatives uh wanna come forward?
Thank you, I was wondering if there was a show of hands, anybody here or online that wanted to make a public comment on this? If I see a hand, then I would potentially make a motion for that, but if there isn't anybody, then I think we're good.
All right, public comment?
There's the, no, nobody's raising their hand, no, so we're good.
Okay.
Do we have a draft motion for this on our desktop?
We have the list of recommendations right here. We have the list of recommendations right here. Page eighty three of your packet.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this with staff recommendations.
You're afraid of case twenty three dash three zero zero.
That's a motion.
I'll support it.
And supported. Okay, any further discussion?
I do want to just say they have been incredibly patient with us to distract this staff turnover and. Try to rewatch the meetings and make sure that we've hit everything that everybody was concerned about. So I do want to thank the applicants for their patience and. For working with us.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by member Nordike, by member Reese. All in favor, say aye.
I remember Bruno appears to have some discussion.
I just don't like the inconsistency. So we have a something on our desktop with draft motion. Here we're just going off recommendations and another previous one. The draft motion we read this entirety, we're not reading these recommendations aloud.
The draft, the draft motion was not in the in the packet, so there was nothing to reference.
I appreciate it. It's my motion. You don't have to vote for it.
But what what is what is the motion?
My motion is that we approve case number twenty three, three eight zero zero with staff recommendations.
Okay, so just.
Recommendations and conditions, yes.
Okay, so got a motion on the floor. It's been supported. Any further discussion?
Can you give us two minutes to read staff recommendations?
Go for it. Would you like me to read them all out, Ryan?
I I we've just always done it if we're not.
Who was that?
I don't know.
Some guy.
I don't know who that was.
This is, this is helpful, though, for a legal statement to have a motion.
I can read it out loud since I supported that. Based on the above analysis conducted for the proposed cemetery for the Islamic mosque and religious institute located at sixty six seventy fifty second street. Cascade Township staff recommend special land use approval together with the proposed site plan along with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant. Shall obtain approval from Cascade Township for any building plans related to the future pavilion prior to any construction taking place. Number two, the applicant shall obtain. Approval for the proposed ground sign at the site's entrance prior to any placement of signage. Number three, a perpetual cemetery maintenance plan shall be submitted to Cascade Township for approval and file prior to any sign improvements taking place. Number four, the applicant shall submit a stormwater maintenance agreement with at least the following information in accordance with Township Engineers Report prior to. Any construction beginning, cleaning of pretreatment areas, cleaning of detention basin, cleaning of the catch basin, some pump. And outfall structure, sediment and debris removal from all structures. The stormwater maintenance agreement is required to be submitted in Kent County Register of Deeds. A soil erosion and sediment control permit. Be obtained from the Kent County Road Commission prior to any construction, and we recommend. This to be approved by Township Board of Trustees.
Any further discussion?
Can we add a six back to if we're going to stamp? I would just like to make sure like this table of the trees are planting and stuff. Can we make that same verbiage on here of?
I don't, if it's in the plan.
Yeah, it's it's there, and with all respect, Brian, I don't wish to amend my motion.
Okay.
Love for it to be voted on.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded.
I can ask, right? And you say no.
You can.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, we have six to one vote. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your hard work.
Good night. Thank you for coming.
Then there was Walt.
See, I can close the windows now. This is great. So next, we.
Article eleven, acknowledge a visitor and those wishing to speak.
Come on, Wally, you got something for us.
Welcome.
Yeah.
What happened to your arms? Everything okay?
Walter Boujack, sixty six thirty nine Thorn Apple River Drive. I live in the village of Alaska, Michigan. I am your Kent County Commissioner. For District twenty one, which includes Caladoni Township, Bound Township and Cascade Township, one half of Cascade Township. Everybody west of the Thorn Apple River, and I want to thank you for your warm welcome earlier in the meeting. And appreciate you guys and all the hard work that you're doing, and I'd like to recognize your director Andrea. I took interest in one of the subjects that were on your agenda tonight, which was the cemetery application on behalf of the. Residents who came to me as their county commissioner to have me look into some of the application process. That was done with the Kent County Health Department, which I did do. I went to the director of the Kent County Health Department. And had them double verify the application process to assure them, to assure the neighbors that. There was nothing missed and that the application before you, you know, was in fact approved by the Kent County Health Department. Just wanted, pardon me? Oh, no, my arm, I got in an accident in your township, by the way.
Wait, wasn't it Whitneyville, was it?
Thorn Apple River Drive, right in front of, right in front of the Buffalo. There were four cars ahead of me and the neighbor there turned right into his driveway. Everybody checked up in front of me, including me. The gal behind me was on her cell phone texting and she slammed in me, never hit the brakes. And so I got a rotor cuff tear and and I had the best surgeon in. Grand Rapids fix it, and I'm on the mend. I've been convalescing, and I like that word. You don't get to use that word convalescing very often, and I've been convalescing now for four weeks and kind of enjoying it. Because I'm not in any pain, just have to keep my arm from, you know, moving around for a couple more.
I'm just happy that there was no industrial in that area, because it might have been a busier road, right? On ramps from a certain expressway, right?
Yeah, fuel tanker.
Yeah, so this is.
So.
May I ask a question, though? So you're on Thorn Apple at the Buffalo, was that you said?
I was on Thorn Apple River Drive heading south, and I was in an accident there, right in front of the Buffalo.
Right where the last case was, fifty second Thorn Apple River.
Right by the sem- where the cemetery application is, right at the end of that road. There's a Buffalo.
I know we have a lot of Buffalo in the township, it's easy to get.
Restaurant called the Buffalo.
No, I didn't hit a Buffalo. And I just wanted to make a comment, a couple comments. I sat on the Caladoni Township Board of Trustees for eight years, and I also sat on the Caladoni Township Planning Commission for eight years. Of the two assignments that I had, I much more appreciated the planning commission than I did the township board. Township board, very political. The Township Planning Commission, very challenging, as you well know, doing challenging planning commission work is always difficult. But I really enjoyed that challenge and so I can appreciate what you guys are doing here and. I did want to comment on Ryan's comment about changing the ordinance. When residents would come to the Caladonier Planning Commission and they didn't like whatever was, you know, whatever. Rules we are making based on the ordinances that we had to work with, my comment to the residents was always, well, if you don't like the rules, then you need to change. The rules and you can always, you know, make an application to the township for the township to review those ordinances. And ask for a review to change the order. So your comments are spot on if if your ordinance seems to be such that. You know, the applications are coming in, they're always greater than what the ordinance allows, then maybe you should look at that and say, you know, how. What makes sense? And for example, at Kent County with the road commission. And we all know what posted speed limits are, but how many people actually drive the posted speed limits? So what the county does is they put out meters to measure the traffic speed. And if the if the posted speed limit is forty five miles an hour, but they find out that ninety five percent of the traffic that's traveling there on a regular basis. Is doing fifty five miles per hour and they're doing that safely, then they change the speed limit from forty five. And it becomes fifty five de facto because of the fact that the traffic is already moving at that speed safely. And you see that also at the state level where they have changed the speed limits to seventy five miles per hour. In the more rural areas where the roads are nice and straight, because the people were not driving seventy miles an hour, they were driving seventy five miles an hour, maybe eighty. And now you go into those areas where they're posted at seventy five, and of course, everybody's doing eighty. But again, I.
Is that true? Because Cascade Road should be eighty miles. Since everybody drives eighty on Cascade Road, right?
Well, if you remember McKenna said that it's one of the reasons that they got down a roundabout on Cascade. They said it would slow down, lower than the eightieth percentile, and they can't go slower than the eightieth percentile.
Yes, it's the eighty percentile, correct.
Your neighbors to speed, don't get faster speed limits.
And so as your commissioner, now I've been on the job for fifteen months. And one of my, one of my personal. Efforts was to learn more about Cascade Township, and how do you do that? Well, you do that by coming into planning commission, by going to the township board meetings. And I think I've been to almost every single township board meeting in the last fifteen months. I've become the eighth member of the Cascade Township Board. And, you know, I've developed a great relationship with the township supervisor. I have a great relationship with the. With the fire chief and. All the board members, township board members have been very welcoming, and so I've learned a lot and I think. I really am up to speed now on, you know, what's going on in Cascade, what Cascade Township is all about. Before I came. Here as a commissioner, I always knew Cascade Township was a great place to live and 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 shop and play and all those things. But I think understanding the government and how the government works and the issues that you deal with are important because. You know, the constituents that I represent are all, you know, part of this township. So. Me being Mr. Caladonia, having been on the Caladonier Township Board of Trustee and planning commission, I know all about what's going on out there. I really needed to learn a lot more about what's going on here in Cascade Township, and I really feel that I have my my thumb on the heartbeat. Of Cascade Township, and you guys are doing a great job. Cascade Township is a great place to live and a great place to play and a great place to shop. Because of what what you guys are doing, I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Wait, I got one thing to pass on to the road commission. Tell them they did a crappy job on Cascade Road. When they did the blacktop, they, I mean, it's the worst blacktop job I've ever seen ever. They did a horrible job.
Well, I I do have to say something about that. When I came on as a county commissioner, I thought that the. Kent County Road Commission was a part of my repertoire, my duties. And actually, the Kent County Board of Commissioners is separate from the Kent County. Road Commission. They have their own, they're just two separate entities. We have the same name, Kent County in front of us, but they have nothing to do with us. And the only thing that we do for them is provide funding from from the budget, but they they are autonomous group and they.
Take away some of their funding if they can't do a better job. Seriously, it's it's probably the worst blacktop job I've ever seen in my life.
Every project that I've seen that they outsourced and had someone else like Superior do the.
Oh, yeah, Superior is great.
Do a great job, and you know, I can't say anything bad about, you know, my own county, you know, maybe they're not the best pavers.
I have a question, as long as we've got your time. So you've identified as the road commission and then there's other, I guess, your group. I live on the west side of Thorn Apple, so what? What do I bend your ear about? What what is in your purview? What is in your? So you you've got, so you just said you have the pulse on us. I don't have the pulse on you at all.
Okay, so that's a good question, and that is a good question. On the, in the very first meeting, one of your township trustee board members told me, Mr. Boujack, we will not have you interfering with the business of Cascade Township. Thank you very much.
And I would have never guessed that.
And I told him that's not my, it's not my interest. As a matter of fact, it's out of my jurisdiction. The the county. The county is separate from the townships. The townships act autonomously through their own boards, their own planning commissions. We do know, we have. We do not new ordinance enforcement. We do not create laws. Basically, the county provides services, Kent County Sheriff's Department, Kent County's Health Department. Kent County Water Department, and you name it, there's a litany of of county services, so. I represent the county in that regard and. I look at things that happen in the township and where and when I can. Find a Kent County responsibility that I can assist the township with. I do step in. So. For example, a resident asked me about. Permitting for driveways, and that is something that the county does. The Kent County Road Commission issues driveway permits. So in that case, I was able to assist the resident and help them, and that's not something that you guys do. So, you know, there's there's a fine line, and I'm not here to interfere with this planning commission and or the township. I I am a student here to learn, and the more I know, the better commissioner I can be. That's the way I see it.
So like, for example, it'd be someone was talking about whether we need a new water tower at some point, if we ever needed a new water tower. Since it's a service provided by the county, that's something we'd partner with you on. Is that kind of maybe correct?
Well, that would probably fall under some, you know, health department jurisdiction, you know, wa- you know, providing water to residents.
Kent County Health Department fall underneath the Kent County Commissioners?
Yes, yes, the Health Department does, and the best thing to do is go to accesskent.com. And you'll see the full litany of all the services that are provided by the county. What do I do? I spend money. We have a five hundred fifty million dollar budget at Kent County, and I go to twenty four meetings a month, twenty four meetings a year. So in twenty four meetings, I'm spending five hundred and fifty million dollars. Do the math, take five hundred fifty divided by twenty four, and you know how much money I spend at every meeting. Every, everything that comes in front of me is nine point eight million, fifteen point six million, so we're constantly. We're the, we are the. The spigot. When the feds, when the feds say we're going to do something and say ARPA, for example. When when ARPA, when the Fed said we're going to spend all this money in ARPA, it's not the feds who spend the money. They push the money down to the state. When the state gets the money, they don't know what to do it, they push it to the county. We get it, and then we have to figure out what to do with it. And there was an instance where I was asked by the township supervisor to step in to find out what happened to. The three thousand. Three hundred thousand dollars, no, three million, three million dollars of ARPA money that was supposed to come to Cascade Township. For P F O S remediation in District Eight here in the township. And there was a deadline. It was an October first deadline, and the meeting that I was at the township board meeting was. September twenty ninth, or like tomorrow's the deadline and we haven't got our three million dollars, you know, and so I went to the township. To the county commission meeting, asked at the meeting, hello, where's the money for?
Did we get it?
Yes, I did. I brought home the bacon. So we were able to get all parties to. It was a litigation lawyer thing, you know, the lawyer, the Cascade lawyers needed to talk to the county lawyers, and when everybody finally came to the table. The money broke free and came, you know, to the town, to the township.
So that nine point eight million you talk about, is that coming out here for parks? We don't have a county park.
Well, um, I I know you've asked that many times, you know, about parks. That is part of the Kent County Board of Commissioners responsibilities, Kent County Parks.
And park director?
Pardon me?
Don't we have a new park director for the Kent?
Yes, we do, and he came right here from Cascade Township. Mister Ben Swasey might have some influence on parks here, and but you got to have land.
He's mentioned it.
Yeah, I know a perfect place for it. Along Grand River.
Well, that we play golf at it over there right now.
Today I was out, today I was at Two Rivers.
Well, I think I think we have a staff member that wants to make a comment.
I can't technically make a point of order, but this is an amazing conversation. I think we should finish up the agenda and then we can take this offline.
Yes.
Wonderful idea.
Guys, I appreciate what you're doing. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you for reaching out to us, Mr. Boujack.
Yep. This won't be the last meeting you see me.
Thank you for staying involved.
Okay, Article twelve, other business. We need to appoint a planning commission secretary.
I'm sorry, before. That was, was there anybody on Zoom to make public comment? I'll be quiet then. We do need to appoint a secretary, and to that point, I'll make a motion to nominate the the former chairperson. Because he nominated me for all sorts of stuff, so I take great pleasure in nominating support.
Support, yeah.
Motion by number Reese, support by. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Well, you didn't ask for any. Any opposed? I thought maybe he was going to vote. Oh, I thought maybe he was gonna vote for the opposed, but.
Thank you for serving. Okay, uh, Michigan Association of Planning Training, Andrea.
So we worked really hard to keep this next meeting, uh, open so that we can have the training during a regular scheduled planning commission meeting. So next week, because of, um, trying to think what, oh, spring break, we have bumped back this planning commissions. We've got two planning commissions back to back. Thankfully, we didn't need to table anything. Next Monday, and sorry if there's any confusion in the email, though Scott has some extra time to work by leaving early. But next Monday, if you are available at five thirty, we're going to have a State of the Department where we kind of just come and, you know, I took some feedback from everyone when I had first started. We're gonna discuss, you know, all of your concerns. It'll be a little bit more workshop, a little bit more fireside chat with the planning department and planning commissioners at five thirty here. One other thing, here, yeah, we're gonna do it here. And then we'll provide dinner. One other thing that came up in a meeting today, there was, um, an applicant that came in to talk to us about a potential rezoning. He has a really unique parcel. Um, we made some recommendations. Um, but I'd like to be able to just kind of casually bring that to you at that meeting and potentially have some time before our meetings where applicants can come in. You know, it won't be live, but we'll be able to say, hey, you know, this is, this is what we're thinking about doing. This is the staff recommendation that we've made to this person. Planning Commission, do you agree? How are your feelings on this? Just kind of getting the temperature of that? Um, so that we'll know if we should proceed in a certain direction.
So essentially, that would be kind of similar to what we used to do, the preliminary, preliminary plan review, wouldn't it be?
Sure, but we don't want to go through all the staff hassle. This would be like, hey, here's five minutes. This is a split zone parcel that's really unique. We don't handle it in our master plan. You know, it actually isn't brought up in the future land use. This is the direction we're thinking about going. Think about it, do you agree?
That's what we used to do in the preliminary plan stage. We didn't do any, whoops, we didn't give any, any formal motion or anything. We just listened and then provided feedback like, well, we think you should probably have more parking spaces or somebody might say it should be smaller. Um, you know, something to that, that effect, but.
And by doing that, isn't it therefore an open meeting?
It would be an open meeting. We would, we would publicize it as just like department review. Everything will be open meeting. We just, well, we don't need to record it and all that. We'll have minutes. But it won't be recorded, so we can just kind of have a conversation.
So have these, so, so this fireside chat happens frequently?
The fireside chat would be just catching up on what's going on in the department since I've started. Taking your feedback about, you know, the department.
So, so what do you call those other meetings that you're saying though? So that it wouldn't be part of the planning commission meeting, it would be something more informal but still recorded and still open meeting?
Yes, because we're here in a forum, we need to notice it. It will be a public meeting. We have a forum of the planning commission.
Has to be a meeting then.
Yeah. So we will, you know, I'll have just a quick presentation. We'll kind of just casually go through what we've been doing internally in the planning department. So you can get a feel for, you know, how Madison and Danielle and I are driving and what we're thinking of doing and how we're implementing new strategies and paying attention to the recommendations that you ma- you made. Because I think we've made some significant ground, even though you maybe don't see it in the couple hours that we spend together twice a month or once a month. We've really implemented a lot and, and worked hard within the department. We'd love to be able to just kind of discuss that with you privately. Then I have invited this applicant to just come and say, you know what, let's see how this works. It will be noticed that this person will be here, it will just be a presentation. There's no application. This way, the applicant will walk away if you say no, knowing like, I'm not wasting any time. Go ahead.
That sounds great. Uh, your other item you have here is rescheduling meetings impacted by the election. And I was thinking this through a little bit. And, uh, in the past, when we have rescheduled meetings or when we have had to cancel meetings for elections, and there have been dozens of them that we've canceled for elections and holidays and spring break over the last nine years or so that I've sat here, we've never apparently, yes, in nine years I served five terms. I'm, I'm, I excel. Not at math though, apparently. So, so, uh, we typically don't set a reschedule date for those meetings. But if a need came up where we had to have a special meeting, then we would call it. But we don't normally, like, for instance, if there's an election, the first week of November, we don't normally reschedule that meeting unless there's a specific need that you see on the horizon to have it. So I just, since, since you knew, I just wanted to tell you that's what we've done. No, I, I'm open to that. But it seems to me that in the past, I think only once or twice did we need to reschedule out of the dozens of meetings that have been canceled. Cause generally, there's not enough material for us to meet that, you know, twenty-four times a year, I guess. Generally, we, we meet significantly fewer than that.
While I respect your years on here, can I, can I do that? My question would be, A, we have more facilities than we've ever had. I think it was you who said the fire station might be a neat place to have as a backup location if we can't use this. I would much prefer, and it's just one person's opinion, to have two or three articles as opposed to today's one hundred and fifty some pages.
Oh, I agree. Today's agenda was too full. I would not have approved that.
That works. I would, I would be supportive of, on when there's conflicts here, could we have an alternative site such as the, the new fire department conference room? And to keep smaller, more regular meetings, keep a cadence as opposed to have less really long meetings.
But, but I don't think that today's agenda is full because we are able to meet in November or May. It's, I mean, it's just, it's, it's timing.
Can we hear what the planning director?
If the election's Tuesday and our meetings are Monday, is there some reason that we can't?
Yes, this room is full of, all of their setup.
Okay, that's what I wondered about.
Don't want to plant your virus on it.
Look at me to JT's. Might make comedies go a little faster.
Yeah. Not on Mondays.
Yeah, that's okay.
So respectfully commissioners, I, because one thing that we have done since we've, um, since I've been here is I've spent, expanded the deadline for submissions from thirty days before a hearing to forty-five. Because we get a submission, we need at least a week to review that. Then we give the applicant a week to respond to our comments. Then they hand us a new application and we need another week to just review that. And then we need a fifteen day period to know if we're gonna put that on for a public hearing, if it is a public hearing. That gives us time, you know, for wiggle room if something happens. That, you know, I hope that you feel like we've been giving you more complete applications with complete snap reviews. The zoning ordinance and their requirements, and we want to continue to do that. So for us to have those dates and to know that you are available would be more helpful for us. And we'll do the best we can to keep them concise, um, and to not overflow, overfill them. But at least we would know when we're talking to an applicant or a developer to say, it looks like we have this next planning commission here. Um, if I can get everything I've won in one month, I'll do that. But at least we'll know as things are flowing, we'll be able to give them submission deadline. Um, and they'll know that's kind of when they'll be available. That's will be helping for us.
Member Bruno.
Makes complete sense. I, 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 empathy, that's why I get that. But just looking at the reverse perspective on it, and I'm sure I still, I'm not sure I still understood you. So this coming Monday, we're gonna have a fireside chat, we're calling it. State, State of the Department and then a train session. So done with that. But then you said going forward, you would like to have opportunities to have more of these little chats. Would those be in addition to meeting twice a month?
It would be maybe coming in early, having, um, doing a little bit more of a direct review, sitting down, maybe ordering dinner on those days.
A workshop.
Yeah, it would be a workshop, just how things are going. Let's just do this, see if it's applicable or see if we need to be more formal.
Well, what my suggestion would be though, is taking your two thoughts and merging them. He's, Scott is on the opinion, we, we don't have enough material to fill twenty-four meetings. You're of the opinion that we need some, some pre-meeting meetings. I, I empathy for our schedules, when we can already hedge up to a month, could we use those during the downturns?
I, I simply was just saying, I thought it was premature to reschedule, uh, the November meeting. That's all I'm saying.
I, I got you, but she's looking bigger picture and.
No, I guess the end of, exactly. And I think, well, is there school election in May?
No, I guess there isn't, is there?
August, I think it is, is the.
I just, I just think it's hard in general to, from my perspective, I'm guessing everyone's, even if it's busier and busier, to give you more time. If we could use some of these down weeks to do that, that would be my preference.
Can I ask a question? Uh, what has happened with Farmland Preservation Subcommittee?
That's a great question.
Where's it stand?
I don't know.
Cause we haven't met since the end of June.
December, January?
January twenty-fourth was our last meeting. And then we sat on it for several weeks waiting for that workshop and nothing has happened since then. So where are we?
Give a dare look to chair on the Farmland.
No, no, it's not dare like, he was, he was told that staff was, no, no. I was told by the, the manager and staff that they were gonna work on some stuff and come back. I'm just patiently waiting for them to do that.
I think right now, there is.
There was a, there was a joint meeting that took place with the, with some of the township board members. And then they were, they were going to, uh, work with legal counsel and draft something up. In the past, the subcommittee worked with legal counsel and staff as a group. And there were some people that didn't like that idea. So the staff and legal counsel are gonna work that out on their own and then come back to us. That's all. So I'm just waiting for that to happen.
I asked Jade this very same question and I've got no answer on it.
He's very busy.
Farmland Preservation, Purchase of Development Rights Ordinance that is being worked on. I think after the conversation that we had at the last meeting, there was, um, a realization that maybe it needed to be more focused on transfer of development rights as well. I don't know where it's, I don't know that it's been addressed or.
That was the, that was what the committee had been working on. No, and, and TDR, that was part of our, that was part of our overall, you know, presentation.
Chris?
Yeah, uh, mighty, I have a separate question. I noticed that we're putting payments on the, uh, in the packets. No, no, my question is, if legal's still on, I think it, not intentionally of course, but may, I, it may violate the Identity Theft Protection Act. Because we're listing account numbers and institution numbers on those checks.
These should be blacked out on the.
Yeah, Laura, I, it's, it's MCL section four forty-five dot six-three.
Typically, checks are going to include pretty publicly available information, account numbers and routing numbers. So it's not uncommon to see those publicly shared. And I'm not sure that they are exempt from disclosure, but I'm happy to look into it.
Yeah, if you, if you want to start, look at MCL section four forty-five dot six-three. Um, I think, and what I don't know is if that provision, uh, directly is applicable to us. But I think that might be.
Mister Chair. Right, I would, I would make a motion that we not publicize that information, somebody take up and black it out. Why did it suddenly start happening? Just that information is fine if the check has to be there.
I don't know that we necessarily need the check in, in the packet.
It hasn't been in the past.
The packets are too long now.
It never used to be.
I don't know. It was something that just never got addressed and we get the application in and it gets scanned and it gets put in there. I wonder, I, it was something that kind of ran through my mind.
Can we have that information redacted from this packet that's on the website?
Yeah, I agree.
And then in the future, we just not include that.
Like the business ones I don't worry about, but we had one resident that had a personal checking account there and.
I don't think that's right. Yeah.
Or I don't, it's not necessarily, it's not doesn't influence.
I, you know what I did like about it though, uh, is I saw that like Warner Norcross Judd wrote one of those checks. And it is kind of nice to know like, all right, there are partying involved in this. So like, I'm not saying there isn't value in it. I just worry about the information.
The information should be redacted.
Yeah.
So, so if we like it, could they do, I honestly just had a client, he had the issue. You can actually just draw a box in Adobe and say blur this area.
But just re, however they redact it, yeah, yeah, that's a good way to do it.
It is neat to see, I like to see like.
The data, yeah, the data was interesting. So I'm not, I, I, I'm not saying you shouldn't have put it there. I'm just saying like, I think it'd be helpful to remove the numbers off.
We are rewriting the applications too, because I think that there's been a lot of, you know, well, who, who's applying, why, who's associated. And so one of the, one of the changes that we're making is we're gonna have, you'll see that the address in question for any kind of land use decision is on the second page. That'll be on the first page, then we'll have on there the applicant, the property owner, the representative will be on there so that there's some clarity is like, who is this and do they have right to be speaking for the property owner? And that would likely have to be, you know, the check would have to be associated with someone that's on there. We do go to the back then, but it doesn't make sense to not do it on the front. That would help with clarity as well.
Okay, it is now nine oh five. Uh, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Are you guys making the determine that determination that you don't want to reschedule then? Is that what's happening?
Yeah, I don't think we need to reschedule the November meeting now. We can, as we get closer, we can see if we need it.
Okay.
I think.
I think member.
I, I was just gonna ask a quick question. And I, in the past, during, uh, planning directors' comments, generally, they would do them from the podium. Does that make a difference to the people on Zoom if you're at your desk versus the podium? Is there a consensus about having you over there as opposed to over here? And the other thing is I noticed there was using the camera today and the screens. I didn't, didn't know if that was a.
This is a Madison thing that I don't know how to do, to be honest.
No, that's, that's good to know. So we need to find somebody to train you to, to operate the system. I used to know how to do it, but I don't anymore.
Speaking as a Zoom user, I can hear Andrea just fine and the camera does shift, um, to show that table and the audience when that's where the sound is coming from.
Okay, so it works fine. Never over there, we just need to get the camera functional.
Well, actually, when I was on my sabbatical, as, as Chris referred to it, the podium sucked. I can hear Andrea over there, over here, I couldn't hear anything that, um, passed those percentages FYI.
I've been watching you guys via Zoom for months.
Just out of curiosity, do they, do they hear Alan okay on Zoom? Because I noticed, well, the reason I say is I noticed the mic at the podium doesn't have a windscreen and neither does yours. But all the other ones too.
The problem is that when I, when I speak, I lean into the mic when people speak up there, they're way back here, they're not a ju- they need to move the mic.
I've been able to hear everyone tonight, if that helps.
I have one last question. Sorry, I'm getting hung up on this, but, um, so these chats though, would you have to have a confirmation of who's there? I, I just see people getting different pieces of information on a matter that might come before us. So if we don't have quorum, can we have a discussion with the person?
No, no.
So we all have to RSVP for the fireside chat? There you go, there you go. So it's not two separate meetings. The meeting starts at five thirty.
RSVP menu choice. So you say fireside, is this, we're using fireside subs or is our fireplace being installed?
Oh, yeah, that's, we have the building permits in, I've had the site plan review approved.
Seven, we're gonna all sit there and just play poker, play poker?
Maybe it will work, I don't know. This is just.
Let's give it a try.
I, I love the idea, but I just want to get there and have to play poker because we can't actually have the thing because there's not enough of us.
Don't, don't take Ryan's, uh, you know, comments to be exclusive. Like, I think the rest of us are willing to try this. Just because Ryan doesn't like to try new things, doesn't mean that.
No, not at all. I, I want it to be successful.
Yeah, this comes from just my time in Grand Rapids. Planning Commission was actually at one and the planning commission would come in for, for lunch. It was a much larger city, so we had a lot going on, but it was just kind of making sure that everybody knows, kind of, here's the stuff that came up in the office that was helpful for the planning commission to get a little bit of insight.
Where was, where was that at? I, I would like to, I would like to see more workshops like that. I think that would be good. And if it works out well, I'd like to see some of them include other entities of the township as well, like the DDA.
Sure.
There's some joint, a couple of joint ones. So it's nice to check in.
Yep.
I'd make a motion to, uh, dismiss or adjourn.
Adjourn. Support.
Seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unnoted. Seven zip. Thank you all.